We'll call this order to meeting at 6:00 PM, June 19th, 2024, regular city council meeting. Roll call wise, Melissa and Susan are excused. Both are not able to be here tonight. The rest of the council is present. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anybody have any proposed revisions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion and please state your name for the record. We're recording this tonight and we'll try to automate the meeting minutes. So if I could have a motion.
So Tom Mallow.
Thank you, Tom. And a second.
Second.
Rich Olson.
Thank you, Rich.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let the record reflect that it was unanimous in favor. Considering the consent agenda, we have A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. And before we take action on that, I want to point out on the item F, profit and loss, that there's been a lot of budget discussion. To note, in the backup, we spent $4,905 last month, but our income was $29,214. So not any budget issues. So is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, like a motion?
So Tom Mallow.
Thank you, Tom. And a second.
Second. Chris Mullis.
Thank you, Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There's none opposed, that's unanimous. Item 6A, we are always looking for members of the Budget Committee. I think we have two citizen member spaces available right now on the Budget Committee. Item B, I hope this is public knowledge, Tom. Says Tom is not going to run. Okay, for another term. So if anyone is interested in running for city council, there will be... Right now, Tom is not going to run. The filing period opens June 5th, right?
Yeah.
It's open through August. So if there's anyone interested, see Lila when she returns on Monday, she's got a packet for that.
I've been here about nine and a half years and I came in to do nothing more nine and a half years ago to get permits to build my house. And I got talked into this and I'm still here.
Well, thank you.
And I wanted to go fishing.
Have you finished the house?
The house is done. I'm fishing.
Oh dear. Well, that's bad.
Yeah.
I retired. I haven't been fishing lately.
I don't fish often. That doesn't work.
I've only been here eighteen months though. Thanks for your service. And then talk about C, there is a packet. If you're interested in running, you need to collect some signatures and file them with the city administrator for review before they go to Lane County. Just as a point of interest, the collections agreement has been signed and completed. It was reviewed by attorney. We had two little revisions. That's in place. If we've got anybody that's not paying their bills, they'll go off to a collection agency now. Any questions or comments on those items? Seeing none, I'll go to item seven. Do we have any citizens input on items not discussed in a public hearing or on anything that's not on the agenda?
Well, I believe I have something that's on the agenda. I'm concerned that it looks like down the road you are going to be replacing our videographer with somebody who's a member of the council. That seems like a conflict of interest to me. I understand you're trying to save money, but it's important that all city hearings be done in a fair and balanced way and not with a bias. And with all due respect to Councilman Clemmons, seems like a very nice person, but you know, it is clear that you are very gung ho Dune City. You're the one person who voted to pass a budget no one else could see fit to pass. So I'm very concerned that you're the one who will be recording the meetings or photographing them. I think that is a problem for the people in the community. It is very important to have someone who is fair, balanced, and professional. And I think that Mr. Campbell has done a great job of that. So that is something I'm really concerned about.
Thanks. And oh, state your name for the record. We're recording this.
I'm sorry. Yes, Jamie Jackson.
Thank you, Jamie.
I think most of you know me. I live here in Westland.
Yes. And you have a comment?
Me?
Yes.
Not my turn.
No, it's your turn. Go ahead.
Oh, well, there was some people ahead of me. But my comment is just picking up where I left off two months ago.
Say your name, please.
Oh, Rick Watts is my name.
Rick Watts, thank you.
Yes. Well, I only have one question and then after that, it's just comments. Have the banned letters been read in public?
Say again?
There's letters in a drawer that are banned from being read in this room because they were about, well, Jamie, whatever happened to her? And they were banned. They were not read in public. They were public letters brought here and they refused to hear them because Jamie...
You want to know if they've been read?
Yes.
They've been read, but not in... They've not been read out loud by the council. The rules of the council say we take letters and put them in the backup in meeting minutes.
Does it say that you let them read the letter?
If you have three minutes, you can comment. You can read your own letter.
Well, they did. That wasn't allowed.
Okay.
For some of these Jackson girls.
Understood.
So I just wondered, obviously it hasn't been. Okay, and then I wish those ladies were here. The reason that I'm angry is because each one of you as a new member had an opportunity to say something or put a stop to some of this stuff that was going on here. Nobody chose to... You reach her up there. I can't, I don't know the order and all, but a lot of people were up there because old Ben was bailed. And the guy in your job, when his eyes were opened, I thought he put it eloquently in the paper. He said he saw that he wasn't aware of what was going on around him and thought that he should step down. He wasn't aware of what was going on around him. He should step down. So anyway, that's why you guys are there. And a lot of this shit doesn't matter because it's not worth it. The building thing though, I was curious about whether that was for necessity or for your side of the view, you know? Because they're used to being a camera here and then all of a sudden there wasn't a camera anymore at some of these meetings. And I wondered if it was for your convenience or really a financial issue. I mean, I don't know. Don't, you don't need to add.
Okay.
And hopefully I won't run out of time here. A lot of this is about stuff that I'm not sure enough about. But I'm glad to see that Jamie has gone, tell you the truth, because I never mentioned the lies that woman's told me. And just no reason for why she lied to me except for someone's own benefit. And you know, I'm not even a player in this game. So anyway, that pretty much caps it up with, oh, the threat thing. I love the, I love the girls' letters. They write some good letters. And they, you know, you guys felt threatened by them? No, no. You were threatened by me, of anybody. How can you be threatened by them? And I'm not even making threats. I'm just, you know, pointing shit out. And then as far, and that's pretty much it, as far as Dune City goes, where's the church? I've never lived in a town that didn't have a damn church. Even if it didn't have anything else, it had a church.
Okay. Cities don't own churches in the United States?
I'm referring to Dune City at the collective.
If a church would like to build a church here, I think they'd be welcome to submit.
Well, obviously they don't want to, but...
They have one. Good question. Thank you. All right, that takes us to eight. 8A is the mayor's report. I want to thank the council and the public. We've gotten through a lot of stuff lately, including a hotly debated budget. Thank you for the effort, including the public. And I want to thank Lila. She's so, to your point, Jamie has retired. Lila has, is the acting city administrator. She's on vacation right now. And she's been playing catch-up and been the planning secretary as well. So she's gotten a lot done and I want to...
Well, I might come over to talk to her, but I will. I couldn't get a straight answer over here because everybody had to go to Jamie to answer my questions.
Okay.
And thought he had a bad plan.
Thanks. So we're moving on. I don't have anything on the community center to report. Susan is out of town. We don't have any water quality report today. And related to the roads, we have, and the copy is in the backup. We have a bid for some road maintenance, slurry seal. And I'm not sure. We'll bring this forward later if it requires a vote of the council. It's a couple of months old and it says it's good for 60 days. So I want to verify some of this information and then we'll bring it back in front of the council. But we do have a proposal to slurry seal a bunch of roads and clean them and seal them for about $45,000. We also need some pothole repairs. And I'm going to ask for a price to fill in these two failed planters in the parking lot. We've got two dirt holes in the parking lot. We'll see if we can get those repaired at the same time and we'll bring that back in front of council. And then on the road report, Pam had noted there's a catch basin on Wright and Wobink that needs to be finished. We have had some complaints about drive, the speeds on Clearlake Road. If it's okay with the council, I will reach out to Lane County. That's a county that maintains an operated road and tell them what I think. And I think to some extent, it's not a lot of speeding. It's just posted at an uncomfortable level if you're walking a dog, right? I don't think most people are going more than 45.
Oh, yes they are.
Not much, but it's, but it's very uncomfortable to walk a bike next to a 45 mile an hour road. With all the driveways, it should probably be posted 25 or 30. But I'll reach out to Lane County if that's okay with you guys. And we'll see what they say. It's not our jurisdiction actually. It just runs through the middle of the city.
We've done that before.
Yeah.
Actually, we tried this, we did, put a rate on Clearlake Road.
Okay.
What's the rule of due check?
All right. And then we've got complaints about potholes on Cloud Nine. And same on Ford.
On Ford Way.
And dates.
Now, those potholes, those can be repaired in $45,000 a day?
I think we need to add because it was just slurry seal. So we'll add, but we've got sufficient dollars in the road budget, so we can afford it.
With the potholes?
Yeah, with what we had from last year. And because we didn't let a contract last year and then what we're getting this year from Oregon, we can afford it. So that's why I want to visit that. Yeah, he's got...
The bid is exclusive with...
Right, it's slurry seal and cleaning. And so I'll make sure that we get, we get a line item for pothole repairs. So we'll talk to him about that.
Is this...
And just say, prepare service. But if there's a pothole, they'll have to repair the pothole before they can slurry seal it. I mean, but...
Or you'll have an actually sealed hole, yeah. But yeah, we'll make sure. That's why I want to follow up with them. That was done in February and, you know, it's now June. So we'll see if there's any cost adjustments or anything. We'll bring it back in front of the council, if that makes sense. The permit report?
When is this going to be addressed?
Hopefully this summer. Yeah, we need to do slurry seal in the warmer months. So this would have to be by August. So we'll bring it back in front of council in July and August, September probably. Otherwise, it's too cool and too wet.
I know, but you need a lot of notice, too.
Yeah, right. Put flyers out for all the residents. All right. Any other questions or comments on that? Seeing none, permit report is in your packet. There is a copy of the city administrative report. There's some notes there from Lila. Becky has been hired back. Becky helped with the water invoices some years ago and is knowledgeable about that data set. So Becky is back working three days a week, right Pam?
Oh, Linda.
Oh, Linda, sorry. Linda, Becky's working.
Three days, yeah. Yeah, three days.
Okay. And then starting this week, go ahead.
Lily is going back or is Becky?
No, Becky's back.
I'm Linda.
Linda's here, but Becky's coming back, yeah. And then Lily Clemmons, related to one, Chris Clemmons, was our only interested party at the job fair at the high school. So Lily's working here for the summer part-time. She started this week. All right. Any questions on reports? Seeing none, we have resolution 2024 number six, fiscal year 2025 budget. So budget was approved by the council on May 29, 2024. It requires a resolution. There's a pretty specific script. So I'm going to read this. A resolution to adopt the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget reflecting the amounts and purposes for appropriations. The council adopted the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget on May 29, 2024, but the council must enact a resolution reflecting the amounts and purposes for those appropriations in the resolution. So the purpose of this agenda item is to consider the enacting of resolution series 2024 number six. I'll ask each of you, have you received a copy of the resolution? It's in your packet. Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
All right, everyone has received. I will now entertain a motion at the first reading of resolution series 2024 number six by title only.
Who's? So Chris?
That was Chris made the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So Tom Mallow.
All right, Tom, on seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
The vote was unanimous, so I will read the title. A resolution to adopt the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget reflecting the amounts and purposes for the appropriations. Do any of the council members have any actual or potential conflict of interest? Joe? Nope. Huh?
Nope.
Chris? No.
Rich? No. Nor do I. I will now entertain a motion to have the second reading of the resolution series 2024 number six by title only. I need a motion.
So Chris Mullis.
Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Rich Mullis. Thank you, Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, that was unanimous. So the reading by title only. A resolution to adopt the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget reflecting the amounts and purposes for the appropriations. It's now time for council deliberations on resolution series 2024 number six. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
No. Joe?
Chris? Rich? All right. Seeing none. I will now entertain a final motion for the enactment of resolution series 2024 number six as presented. Want to show a move? Any a second?
Second.
I'll put Tom. Thank you. All of the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It's unanimous. Upon unanimous, oh, I need to call names on this one. Roll call vote by council members. Joe?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye. That passes unanimously. The resolution will be enacted and take effect immediately. I think that's it for resolution. Thank you. Next on the agenda, not the B, Dune City Administrator/Recorder Position Discussion. So currently, Lila Timmons is the acting city administrator. I would propose that Lila be made the not acting Dune City Administrator and Recorder. Lila was hired by Jamie Mills in January 2024. In the last two months as acting city administrator, she's transitioned into the position, filled two key vacancies, invoiced over $10,000 worth of water fees, provided all of our meeting agendas a week or more in advance and meeting minutes prior to the next scheduled meeting. During this time, she has also functioned as the planning secretary and is doing much of the same for the planning commission. She's gotten to all three of our banks and corrected our who can sign and updated all the information. And so technically, she's my direct report, but I need the approval of the council. So I request the council's support to appoint Lila Timmons, city administrator, and give her the oath of office at our next scheduled meeting. That should be July 3, 2024. The current city administrator job description is on file and I propose two changes. There's a discrepancy between the job description and the contract for the previous city administrator. The job description says it's an at-will salaried employee, but the contract said it was an hourly at a rate and it was paid overtime if there was additional hours. So she had to track all the hours. I propose to make it a salary exempt employee. And so we'll adjust, instead of an hourly, we'll adjust it to an annual salary range that matches what the hours are already. So it doesn't change the pay rate, just states that it's an annual salary. The other is it has a residency requirement in the job description. And I think it should be in the vicinity or like our property management, you know, within a 30-minute radius or something like that, instead of a resident of the city. She currently lives just outside the city limits. And I think she's a great candidate regardless of where she lives. So that's my proposal. Any comments?
So questions? We don't have to post a job description? Like what's the legal side? We don't have to post the vacancy?
No, this is an appointment of the mayor and council.
Okay.
So there is no posting requirement if you, we can do... We have a lot of flexibility. So the CIS folks, the people that we buy our insurance from, said if we wanted assistance, same with the League of Cities, they said we can help. We can post it on our website very inexpensively and we can advertise. They'll help with new job descriptions if we want to change it. They did do this one and they also did our employee handbook. So all that stuff has been reviewed by them and is basically best available technology for local government, but yeah, so this is an appointment of the mayor and council.
And then her job role qualifies to be salary non-exempt? I mean, there's proofing that usually you got to go through.
The job description says that, that it's an exempt employee in the very beginning. Exempt, regular, full-time. But the contract, Jamie's contract?
Right.
Said hourly, notify the mayor of any changes to your hours. And I had never been notified of any changes to hours. But yeah, so I thought that should be adjusted.
But we asked like our attorney to make sure she qualifies on that? Because it's a weird, we have to deal with this in many states. There's weird testing that comes up to it for different roles. And how many people you manage is a big thing.
Yep.
If you have power, decision-making power.
Right.
Just sort of...
I'll verify that.
The two positions, the first position's hourly and the fourth's hourly?
Yeah, either way, it's first. Yeah, everything else in the employee handbook was the same. It's a full-time. So yeah, all the other terms, the vacation, sick, none of that changes.
So if it's an appointment, does that, does that have a term tied to it?
Well, the previous contract was open-ended. So it was an annual contract with an annual review.
So it's just an appointment contract?
Yeah.
With no term? Okay.
Right, right. So you could put a term and say, I want to review it every two years or have it coincide with, say, the mayor election, which is every two years since it's an appointment of the mayor. Jamie's was annual, but it was open-ended and it said you'll get an annual review. Turns out, she had never had an annual review from any previous mayor.
If you're at-will, that kind of makes it a degree. It may not be as smart, but it gives us a lot of tea reasons.
Well, I have some experience with a state manager being fired and we didn't have any review and it cost us.
Oh, we heard that. That's a...
So yeah, that would be put on the calendar.
Firstly, I think we should wait for the two ladies that are not here tonight to weigh in with us on...
I asked Susan when she told me she couldn't be here, she had any concerns. She said, no, she supports. Melissa was the last minute. She got stuck at work. So I haven't had an opportunity to discuss it.
That was my proposal because I know they would have an opinion here too.
Okay. Chris, any other comments?
Are you done?
You have anything? Sorry.
No, they, they're not being a resident. She's enforcing policies. She's not making policies. So I'm happy to share that.
I agree that the woman's opinion is important and I would like for them to...
Hang on, this is a council discussion. Rich?
Well, I believe that this is your appointment.
Yeah.
So I would support whatever your decision is on this.
Okay. Thanks. It's not really a public discussion item, but I appreciate your comment. Was there any other comments?
Well, I had wanted to say happy Juneteenth. I had meant to start the evening with that, but I think I was, no, this, I was surprised we're having a meeting today because even the Florence library's shut down.
Yeah.
But I realize you're having a meeting, so I'm here.
Thanks. So I need a motion. I need a motion to continue it to a future meeting or a motion to approve with those conditions?
Yeah, I don't want to delay this. I'd rather see this updated before we say move forward, just as a technicality. I mean, this should come first, a clean, clear job description with the terms and conditions thing we could say.
I don't even know if job description is going to come to council.
Yeah.
You know, that's an administrative duty. Other than this is your city administrator, that's why I bring it up here is...
Right.
It needs, there's a discrepancy between the previous contract. Actually, the job description doesn't need the revision. It says exempt.
Right.
It was the old contract. And so if we do a contract again, I was going to make sure they agreed because that contract had slightly different language.
Right, okay.
So the job description itself, other than it was hourly times the hours in a year, you know, I would propose to put a range because it already says exempt, correct, right? Full-time, you know, that's already in there. It was the contract that you must see, you know, we have a contract that... We need to do that. So it's up to you guys. How do you want to proceed?
So if we can validate that that change to a salary is legal, even if it's just a conversation of the lawyer, make sure that's legal?
Yeah, that was my editorial note because it's already says exempt. So and Jamie was pretty much functioning like a salaried employee. It's just her contract didn't say that. Lila doesn't have the same contract. It says a blank slate, right? So that will be drafted if you approve and we'll come back. So there would be some more discussion.
Yeah. I'm all, I mean, I've worked with her closely on some stuff in day zero, day one, and she was a go-getter and took a deep dive and I'll see very knowledgeable. But I just want to make sure we do the technical side.
I agree.
So we don't have any future issues because we overlook something.
I would work with CIS folks for an updated contract and I don't see that as well. So it's kind of both. You want a motion to approve the appointment and then we'll work out the contract and you guys will see it again along with Melissa and Susan.
Yes, as long as those two are equipped, it was mine.
It'll be a future meeting, so yeah, they should be here. Okay. So then I need a motion to approve the appointment. And really, that's all it is because you'll see the contract is separated.
So I'm going to motion approve the appointment as we discussed.
Okay. I need a second.
Second, Tom Mallow.
Thank you. I'll write that down too. I promise to help with meeting minutes just in case. Sorry, I don't get up to the agenda. Get my notes here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. And roadway area assignment. We had a map handed out. It's, there's not a copy in the backup, I don't think. We can, we can skip that until the next meeting if you want. Does anybody have any heartburn?
Nope.
Okay. And then whole business. Resolution series 2024 number five regarding the former city administrator signing the audit documents. So when Jamie returned all the audit comments to the... So when Jamie returned all the audit comments to the auditor, she signed it, thinking everything would be approved at the next meeting, and it wasn't. So it's been reviewed by her, all those answers were from her. So I'm uncomfortable asking someone else to sign it at this late of a date. So we have the script for the approval of the resolution to approve that, and the signature would stand, and we would be done. Does anybody have any questions or comments before I get into the script for the resolution? Seeing none. All right. Resolution authorizing the previous city administrator, Jamie Mills, to sign the audit documents for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four with city council approval and other matters properly relating there too. The purpose of this agenda item is to consider the enacting of resolution series twenty twenty four number five. It would be a first and a second reading tonight. Counselors, have you each received a copy of the resolution?
Yes.
Yes, from Joe?
Yes.
Tom, yes? Chris, do you have it?
Yes.
Chris? And Rich? All right, thank you. I will now entertain a motion to have the first reading of resolution series twenty twenty four number five by title only.
So move Tom around.
Thank you, Tom.
Second. Chris wants?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. The title is, "A Resolution Authorizing Previous City Administrator Jamie Mills to Sign Audit Documents for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three, Twenty Twenty Four with City Council Approval and Other Matters Properly Relating There Too." Do any of the council members have any actual or potential conflict of interest?
No.
Joe?
No.
No.
Oh, no. Chris?
No.
No? All right. I will now entertain a motion to have the second reading of resolution series twenty twenty four number five by title only.
Shall I move?
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All in favor, that's unanimous. All right. Reading number two, "A Resolution Authorizing Previous City Administrator Jamie Mills to Sign Audit Documents for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three, Twenty Twenty Four with City Council Approval and Other Matters Properly Relating There Too." It's now time for the council deliberations on resolution series twenty twenty four number five. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yep.
So on the former, the resolution we're given, dated today-
Yeah.
It says, "A Resolution Authorizing City Administrator," not former, what, we're given? So she's former at this date, how's that work? And it's in two spots?
That's a good question, because this says former, and the date when she signed it, she was the city administrator.
Right.
So.
But then that would be after or before, if we know, so before we approve it?
We're basically ratifying staff action.
Right.
She was the city administrator at the time. The audit comments went to her, and she answered them. This says former, so we should probably just make it former.
Yeah, maybe just like, we're not gonna hurt it.
No, it's a former. No, I agree. So, good comment. So we will, before that sign, we'll change that. Okay, any other comments? Chris?
No.
Sorry. Tom?
I'm a third.
Rich? Thank you. All right. Now I need a motion that includes amending to say former. If you want to take a look at that.
I think a motion to amend resolution twenty four dash zero five to say former city administrator.
In two locations, yes. Yeah, where it says city administrator, it's a former, yeah, that'll make sense.
Miss Joe?
I'll send that one on.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, I will now entertain, no, that was, sorry. That was the final motion for the enactment. I'm sorry, I'm supposed to do a roll call vote again? Joe?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Anne Rich? All right, thank you, I'll make a note, and that passes, so that, we will make that adjustment and get this signed. Okay, we had whole business, and I don't have any additional information here on our insurance policy. Did we want to change the level of insurance on vehicles? Or change the cover, coverage? And I don't know any of those details, so we can continue that for the next meeting and get some more information.
What is crime coverage?
I'm not sure.
I think that's visibility.
Like vandalism or any kind of thing?
Yeah.
I've never seen it, it's sparse though.
I haven't either, I wondered the same, so we'll get some info for it. All right. Franchise agreement with Hyatt Cable is back with Hyatt, they are working in Florence, they are working in a way this direction, so that's an exciting opportunity to have a choice, anyway. And then D, that takes us to D. Short-term rental ordinance, we are on page eleven, correct?
Yep.
We got your reputation procedure violations and penalties. Wherever that's off, correct?
Yep.
All right. So the highlighted yellow were things that were modified? So. Item B, notice. Does anybody have any comments in the notice? That's a section that was rewritten. Actually, first ones, it should say city staff, right? Not city administrator, city staff.
I think we got it back up to the top where we left off, it was city administrator needs to, we changed the city staff, is that correct?
Yes, oh yeah, appears in A as well, correct.
Right at the top, and then in A.
Yep, yep.
Can we see how many choices one says?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, also, it's in number five, A five.
And B two.
Yeah, it's in B and C as well.
And last meeting, everything in yellow there, and so B, I think, was good, because the staff said that fourteen days was plenty of time for it to come, take care of that, correct?
Notice the last sentence seems a bit, I mean, it's just, no, I think, no violation that threatens the health and safety of individuals, I think, in a period, you know, where which affects, or could affect, the water quality, it's-
Two things.
Yeah, paper, but it sounded good to say it, maybe, but it kind of takes the sentence, or takes the paragraph, not weird.
And the second one, it says affects the water quality of the city's drinking source, and it, that should probably be reworked, since we're not the service water and groundwater, and it's affect the-
The intent for that paragraph is just to highlight how we will be dealt with.
Correct, yeah.
There's no different notification procedure for-
Actually, you could probably end it at period after health and safety, right? Because that includes water, wastewater, whatever.
Yeah.
Because we call out one thing specifically.
Yeah, because you put which affects, or could affect, everything could affect the quality of water.
Right. So maybe take the whole sentence out, because any violation that's a threat to health and safety, period, like I said, that's a bad code. The thing with period there, the last part's awkward, and the word is- The last part's also covered by city law. And then I had in my notes, scratch, provided by Boone City Hall, right? It said, deliver a written notice. We're not going to prescribe the notice, they have to appeal either by hand, hand-delivered or sent sort of by mail.
Correct.
Of appeal to the city, right? To the city's scratch administrator. Staff will figure out who wrote that to. I'm not together with-
I was working for Riley, but I didn't see the law.
Yeah. Jamie originally had a form-
Yes.
-that, but it really should come as a letter, or either from the, from the owner or their attorney, appealing, right? They need to tell us what they're appealing, instead of trying to provide a form, because it was adding to the time and process, having to come here to get the right form. Okay, now in C, you appealed to the city, but this fell to the city administrator, correct?
So they, they want to hold up and bring it to the council.
Appeals?
Yes.
Okay.
So like, so their decision is suspended, pending appeal. They will transmit a notice, all applicable matter and law to the city council.
Okay, you're right. So that could say city administrator, or it could say city staff, either way, it's coming to the city council, and the appeal comes to city council here. So most of my problems, unless it has to be the city administrator, it's going to Any other comments in that, in that section C? Rich?
Yep.
Tom, anything else in C?
No.
Chris?
Just C on this page, or C on the next?
C, the whole C, yeah.
It says, "The city council's decision will be final on the date of mailing or decision to the appeal." It would just be on the day we make the decision?
It actually should be, it's, yeah, the decision's filed on the date of council action.
That's what I was saying.
Right.
If we do allow it, that's the decision.
Right, right. So it'd be date of the meeting, the council meeting.
Yeah, they're just called here, place of the hearing, time of the hearing.
Date of the hearing, yeah.
And that's for sure a reason why it has to be on a date.
And a appeal to one, I'm certain. All right, that's a good catch. Rich, anything else?
No.
Okay. And our red note is P, right? We have it being scheduled and needs to be published, so that everyone's aware in advance. And then the last sentence, you can strike, that's the, the information by cameras has been added, so strike that question, it's in here. So, want to discuss the fee schedule?
Like the, so general, so just like, put together like a general outline of progressive fee schedules, first one, numbers don't matter at this point, but they would get, you know, whatever, for a fraction, say a hundred dollars for the first one, if they then reoffend, second one is found, they reoffence, I think I tripled the number.
Okay.
And then the third one, which we discussed, they're gonzo's, but they're also going to get hit with another really sizable, I think I did just three multipliers going up. But the moral story is, it's-
Like a hundred, three hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars?
Correct, yeah. And then there's different, this where it gets complicated, like the violation, like the magnitude of it, and that's really hard, because that thing's very subjective, because you may think something's, oh my God, and be like, whatever. And so that's gonna be some discussion for us to put, but that's the same way, now that I think I mentioned during the work session, if it's a cash traffic event that has caused, or a failure of an owner to do something that caused a cash traffic event, I think that's immediate termination, but there would also be a fine to that. So it's just staggered that way, to make it the easiest, so. Because some people, you hear all, like in the old, in Washington State, going HOV lane in the very beginning was like fifty dollars.
Right.
And people were on the news going, I'll pay fifty dollars all day, except missing my flight. So what they do, they made it five hundred and like ninety dollars, and it stopped a lot of the HOV violations. So that's kind of the same methodology. If you make it something simple, people will pay a hundred dollars all day long, because they're making thousands.
Right.
So let's put it, make it painful, since this isn't, no writing, and since they're lucky to be doing this and getting permits. So yeah, I just kind of put the structure to go up, and at some point, I'll put a lot more around, and we can actually do a full presentation, because we also have the permit fee structure, like two big things.
Right, and we have copies of that.
And Susan has a different version than she leaves in. But that's all it is, escalating, we have to figure out all the different types of violations, the impact of those violations, and then assign a fee, and then a multiplier for those fees.
Okay.
Brutally easy, leaving the concept.
And it's gonna stand apart from this document, so that it can be modified.
Right, even in here, it says that we can do resolutions to change-
To change fees, yeah.
So it's in here, already isn't kind of a, an out for us to do that, but yeah, I think it's gonna be a, it's gotta be a published schedule, in my opinion. So like, if you do, for your permit, probably way off task, if you, you know, put an application for a permit, whatever we give back, or if we say you've been approved, the fee schedule is probably right there, and then we post them online, that's what it seems, post them everywhere, so everyone can see them, and no one can say they didn't.
And changing the number by resolution's easier than putting it in ordinance.
Yes.
And having to go through posting and public hearing. Okay. So you like the structure, any other comments on that structure? I agree, I think we have to identify something, that we say, we believe these are minor, and these are major, and then there's cash traffic, you know, something, whatever, you want to put in those categories to-
Yeah, we'll bucketize them.
Yeah.
Then put numbers.
Better grounds for immediate-
Right.
-immediate suspension, and whatever that is, a three thousand dollar fine, or whatever it is.
Right.
Okay. Does that make sense in concept? Because yeah, I agree with Jamie, that if we don't have that pretty well spelled out, it's like the code enforcement violation, it says it could be this, it could be that, and if it's over this amount, it should come to council.
Right.
And it's like, there's a lot of wiggle room in there.
Right.
Say there's some minimums and some, or range, and I agree, it's a, it's a number in second offense, is it two times as much, three times as much, something like that? Yeah, it makes sense.
And we gotta, and we gotta organize, like, what we're gonna, offenses, about sizable offenses.
Right.
Because in that, it's gotta be-
Right, it has to be clearly a violation of court, right.
So it's for everyone, they could go, oh, they didn't empty their garbage over to the fine sheet, and go, this is what it is for not doing that. It's just so we also have it very clear for the citizens.
And some of them exist, right? Some of these exist for citizens, so we have to be careful, is it the same? Like the sign, the sign code came up, we shouldn't allow any signs, but we already allowed signs.
Right.
So let's just leave the sign code, we already have sign codes, so yeah, the Trump stuff, the public abuse and stuff. So yeah, the Trump stuff, public nuisance stuff, it's always spelled out whether you're a resident, a renter, a visitor, it's already in there, but.
The thing is, we'll have to verify on the ordinance about like, say, noise. I don't know if there's anywhere that we have a fee schedule for a resident if they're blaring music outside the quiet zone, where we're going to go after renters.
It says it's a code violation, right? And then it's subjective again, right? And it's like, well, it could be up to this amount and he's coming to council here, but.
So we're gonna kind of hard code numbers when we do it for the short-term rental plan. But I think that's kind of also its own little deal, because again, you're having to get a permit, so it gives us flexibility of making terms and conditions.
Okay.
Because they're asking us to, to approve them for something after we go by our rules, not their ordinances, obviously you have to go by them, but there's going to be more penalties, I guess, in the short-term rentals.
All right.
It's a privilege, yes, it's a privilege.
Right, yeah, so it gives you latitude to tighten the shot a little.
Yeah, any other comments? All right, and we'll revisit that. Any other comments on D one? We didn't have any revisions in some of these, but. One, two, three, and E. And then next, we have revisions to one, one, two, three, that zero, one, six, site visits. So that's, should say city staff.
So something that came up in my hearing with Tom Clayholm. Do the, the city staff have right to go on anyone's property for any reason?
Not for any reason, I think for cops, right? If it's something spelled out in here, then yes.
Okay, so a complaint becomes probably part of the problem, it's just technical, it caused.
I think so.
Okay.
You could also just argue that by having a permit, you are accepting.
Right, well, that, right, right. Because this is specific to somebody with a permit, yeah, and that's what it's saying is that you have to authorize if you pull that permit.
Yeah.
But in general, yeah, it's still a yes.
Okay.
If you're running a city and you believe there's a violation of the city code, same.
You can enter property unannounced and all that.
Okay. Yeah, or you have a reasonable notice, right?
Yeah, because I think if the citizen has a property that does not involve permits, and for whatever reason a member of the city staff wants to go check out something, they need to get permission, particularly if there are no trespassing signs.
Well, if, if it appears there is a violation, it's the same. You request permission, but you can still, I mean, if you think there's a violation, you can call the chair's office if you need an escort or if it appears to be a code violation. So whether you're a permit, you're, or just a resident, but yeah, but this is pretty specific, right? When you pull a permit, you're bound by all these, so you're.
Agreeing to those terms.
You agree to that term, yeah. And this does say, we will make a courtesy call. And we're looking for their cooperation.
Yep.
So I think in that fee schedule, we have some stuff where we refer back to the code enforcement, chapter thirty-six, the next one talks about public nuisance, right? It says as to forth, so there's some of those, that fee schedule could be super helpful to code enforcement on other areas.
Right, right.
Because there's side on there.
Correct.
And you get into those, well, what's going to end up in front of council is a five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars.
That's something that's.
Yeah, because they might go in chapter, either referred to in chapter thirty-six and one twenty-three, you know, to be able.
Right.
And then it'd be saying, if you're consistent. Any other comments in there? We're going to go to page thirteen. I'm getting dangerous and close to losing myself out of a job. Not really. All right, thirteen is the last one, chapter. I don't think, I think the indemnification stuff came from the attorney. I don't think we had any comments on the next couple of sections. Except we have density in this twice, because we already went through that. Let's see. I don't want to put anything twice, because we only have one word different. And question for the council, do you believe item C belongs here?
Item C?
This C on the last item. We don't have your density.
We have, we have separate things to.
That's what I thought. So the concern was of previous city staff, that if we didn't put it here, it makes weddings and gatherings illegal rental. And I disagree because it's, a wedding or a special event has not the same as residential housing, right? The rest of this is about you renting it to stay the night there and it limits the number of bodies. So I'm with you, Chris, I believe that belongs somewhere else, and I think it already exists somewhere else.
Yeah, but a permit for large events.
Right.
We have special event permits.
That's, and, and what's the number for a special event permit? How many people? Is there a minimum number?
I don't think so.
Okay, so if it's determined to be a special event, like a wedding or a.
They have to bring us a plot plan and how many people, and if they have excess amount of people, they have to make sure they have enough outhouses and.
And satellite parking and whatever to accommodate, that's what I thought, because the comment came up, I said weddings and gatherings don't belong in a, in a overnight.
No.
Rental, and the concern was if it didn't exist somewhere else, and it's like, well, it doesn't belong here. So I'm with you, Pam, I think that's a special event, not a residential rental.
Right.
You got it.
Strike, strike C.
Yeah, I think we should strike C, and, and that exists someplace else, and if it's a problem, we need to revisit chapter thirty-six, right? That covers all the code enforcement stuff. And then where is the, the density? Is this the one place that was, we forgot about?
Each thirteen?
Yeah, because I thought we had it in another spot. We covered density with septic as well.
It was in the. In the application section, we're building out the application. I think it was in the portion that indicated the septic systems.
That's what I thought, but now the septic said that it will be the number approved by Lane County. So we took all the numbers out.
Mm-hmm.
So now it's two per bedroom plus two.
Right, isn't that?
Or, or less, you know what? That is the reword language, I don't know why it's not yellow, because that agrees with the septic. The septic says whatever Lane County says you can accommodate, and this one limits you to two per bedroom plus two, or whichever is less. If the sanitation folks say it's less, then it's less. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, should we?
I don't know why it's not highlighted, because we did already revise that.
Would we put, would we put another section, like then we say per Lane County?
Yeah, that's in the septic, that's in.
The septic that deals with the short-term rentals, so shouldn't we use that same language here or refer? Because now we have two spots covering the same thing with different.
We took all the numbers of bodies out of the septic one here.
So we need a permit that would provide a statement of what their septic system can handle.
Right, septic expanded use approval. If it's certified private onsite system, which everything in the city, its property owner shall provide an approved onsite location authorization notice from Lane County Sanitarium that indicates maximum number of people the system is able to accommodate. So that is that.
That would make it be very clear.
Yeah, so that would, I don't know why this is a yellow, we already revised that.
Correct.
So we took all of the body count out of up here. It's in here and it's either two per bedroom plus two, or the septic system, whichever is less.
Correct.
And it agrees, because we shortened that to just whatever Lane County.
Right, and I was thinking, we just take that whole septic language and then just put the same language here, because why are we spelling it out in one spot when it's referring both to occupancy limits?
Well, I think this is the part where in the permit, you've got to have all these pieces.
You got it, yeah. That's, that's what the person has to turn in, that's not the determination of what they're asking.
I'm sure why density is the very last section, but, but they now agree, because we had different math before.
Yeah.
And, and we did revise it, it should be yellow.
Okay.
It was already revised, and then strike C.
The, the heading says parking.
Right, it's just density, that's right.
There was parking somewhere.
So density and occupancy, yeah. Well, it was, the parking was part of the special event.
Right, within seconds.
So really, we, in the title, we should strike parking and use limits, and it's just density and occupancy. A and B.
Seems like it's just kind of tossed in at the end with that stuff.
Yeah, it is. And then the last page is reserved for more words now, page fourteen.
No more words.
Left, right, we've got a blank page now, it does get wiped out.
Yeah.
Be simplified a little bit, so. Can you get all your comments?
We did.
Okay, Tom, can you get all your comments? Chris, any other comments?
Your comments.
Rich?
Nope.
It's only seven o'clock, come on.
Well, explain the, the, um, just so everyone knows, that a firsthand experience, we, we have an Airbnb right next to us on Rio and it's, you know, some, always that good or worse.
Well, that's what I was thinking, do we want to do that? Okay, we want to do it, go to that work. So, does anybody in the public have any other comments on the last four pages that we're talking about? Because we're gonna.
You didn't give them to us, so.
Okay, they've been previously published like five times, we're down to page eleven. So, these last couple of revisions are going to be typed, and then it's going to be distributed for public comment, and that will be a scheduled meeting, and they'll be distributed again. So we'll get these comments in there, so you'll see a clean copy.
Thank you.
Because we're working with all this yellow and strikeouts and trying to get you a clean one to read, and, um, so that'll come out real soon. Now let's go back to the agenda for your, so that, the, the end of D, so we have no executive session proposed or needed. Adam, Tom, for the good of the order, Joe, you have a story to tell?
Really do I? No, it was, it was interesting, so we do have a very large Airbnb next to us, I think it's like five rooms. There's always lots of people there, and they're at, they'd say like thirteen people, whatever it was, meets and all that, so on, it was a Monday, it was weird, Monday, I'll send a band starts warming up at like five thirty, going, well, this is interesting. And then I, so I walked over, we were bored, so I walked over and looked through my bushes, and there were cars parked everywhere, up and down. Now, they're a very exclusive gated house parcel, so they have a long driveway, so it's all on my personal property, so I get it. But very loud music that.
High school graduate, wasn't it?
I don't know, because it was Monday night, it was kind of a weird night. But it was interesting in the sense, so we called, so we wanted to test some of our rules.
Yeah.
It's always fun. So call the person of record, my wife did all this, looked up on Airbnb, called the person of record, who is a property manager that does operate in our city. And he had no clue of where she was talking about, even saying, you know, Rio Drive on the one we live, he was like, hey, where? No, it took us three times, it took her three times to actually get ahold of him, but it was within an hour, so check that block, but it was not knowing the property. And then more importantly, you know, the loud music went to nine thirty, and I think we have quiet time at seven, I mean, I don't agree with our ordinance at seven, most of this time of year.
Pretty early, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, really early, but, but went to nine thirty, even after calling the property management company, directly speaking with them, and my wife disclosed that as a council member, and this could affect the future of short-term rentals. Hey, you gotta throw a little spice in there. Didn't matter, I mean, they went, awesome music. Awesome music, that was great, my wife was out there clapping, no one listening to it all, but, no, but it did get me to think a little of some of our real world issues that we have about people complaining and then people being compliant. Because the next step, I was gonna, the fence is, you know, this high, I was gonna pop over the fence and just say, look, you guys, you had your fun, but there are rules, you gotta follow the rules, and now you're gonna, the owner of this property is gonna have to answer to the violations. So I think it just, for me, it was a really good insight to what we're trying to do here, how we're doing it, and then making violations, or, you know, if you get pinched for something, make it stink, so it was like, whatever. It's, no, every unfortunate, whatever it's doing, they do nothing anyway. And so again, that was just kind of really eye-opening that we got to do something if we're gonna allow these, because I almost got to a point of should we allow them or not, many more, because if people aren't going to follow the rules and they're coming nuisance, then they are coming into our community, respect it, you know, and again, I don't agree with the seven PM, but if that's what it is, know the community you're in, you've got to stop.
Right.
And then if the property manager don't blow off the, because we follow it, right? That's an official complaint made, and so we're having to file one here to make it all official. But, you know, we just got to think about this more and more, and that's why the penalties, I just, I almost went to like a five multiplier, you know? Obviously a phone call and a thread, that doesn't work. So it's just stuff for all.
Yeah, it's not all that's cracked up.
No, we had no cloud at all, the music got louder. Been good, great songs, great singer, but it's not what our community wants, especially that late, I don't know, work day, you know, nine thirty is getting a little late to be blaring.
They play a I Love Man.
Yeah, exactly. That should have been their closing song. Yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to state that, that firsthand experience on a, about what we've been talking about.
Yeah.
Just really kind of pushed, hit home, like, yeah, we got to really do something to tighten this down.
Pam, are the quiet hours in chapter thirty-six?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I think so.
I think they have thirty-one?
Ninety-one, the nuisance ordinance.
Oh, the minimum.
Yeah.
But those, but those hours are basically for work people's noises, so for rentals.
They have work hours and they have quiet hours, and, and the first is for.
Those two don't match.
And the second is for like backyard barber community.
Right.
Yeah, so usually it's like six to six is work, and then.
Right.
Like seven to ten or something like that is.
Right, and how about ours, or, I mean, to me, loud noise is loud noise based on another person. Music's better than like a chainsaw gratted.
Nice, hard to sleep during that.
Exactly, yeah, so.
Okay, all right. What's that?
It's the minimum.
Yeah, well, I think that'll come up in the discussion of finance schedules, if.
Right.
You know, depending on what kind, are we going to differentiate what type of work and what type of.
Right, yeah, where it falls.
Top that, Tom.
Okay. Our mayor, Mayor Forsythe, several years ago admitted a declaration, and since he's now gone, I would let our new mayor to at least affirm that declaration or make the same declaration, and I'll paraphrase what he said, and this is probably three or four years ago, but the Dune City will respect and does respect the Second Amendment in Dune City, full support of them. Dune City is not a gun-free zone. We are not now, or intend to become, a sanctuary city. So, I guess I'm asking our new mayor to affirm that, since Mayor Forsythe is gone, but we passed that, we all agreed as council to, that yes, that is the case in Dune City. But now Mayor Forsythe is gone, so I'm just asking the mayor to reaffirm or restate whatever what I just said, and I can repeat that if anyone would, I could do that again. The Second Amendment.
Not a gun-free zone.
Not a gun-free zone, and not a sanctuary city.
Can we ask questions? I mean, it's.
Sure.
I mean, I don't want to create a big discussion, but is that more would be ordinance stuff? Like is that, so I get if someone.
No, it's not like a declaration, so there's a lot of.
But declarations are more.
Ceremonial.
Yeah, that's, that's a good way of putting it.
Yeah, that's my, that's a good way of putting it, I was going to say different word, but.
Yeah, it's not regulatory, but.
Yeah. So I guess the, yeah, we can table this for another time, lots of thoughts.
Yeah, well, we'll see if we can find that, you know, we'll go back and see, see, get a copy so you can see what.
It, it should be in a minute, I, I remember him doing that.
Were you on the council then?
I wasn't on the council, that was not too long before, it might, might have been in the middle of COVID.
Yeah, and I don't care about the words per se, I care about the intent.
So twenty twenty, twenty twenty what, twenty twenty?
Maybe, maybe twenty-two, somewhere right in there, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, somewhere right in that area.
Yeah.
I don't recall exactly.
It was before twenty-two.
Yeah, I think it was.
When did the mayor pass with, geez, that was twenty-one, twenty-two, wasn't it?
Sheldon was mayor in twenty-two.
Yeah, so probably twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. But I, there you go.
Okay. All right. Chris?
I have nothing to do here.
Rich? I'm good. I have nothing else either, so we'll adjourn this meeting at seven twelve.